This conference will now be recorded.
Well, good morning, everybody. This is a continuation of our September 8th meeting. So we have brought the agenda forward to the 18th. We'll call the meeting to order. Can we please have the roll call?
Bruce Francis.
Present.
Christopher Farrar.
Present.
John Orr. Lum Kwong. Myrna Patrick.
Present.
Nadia Gardner.
Present.
Robert Strickland.
Here.
Clancy Adams is present. Gail Hendrickson. Julia Decker. Joanna Lyons-Antley.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you'll see on the agenda that we brought forward from September the 8th that the minutes of August the 11th, at that meeting, we passed those minutes and I've signed them. So to adopt the agenda as modified, I'll take a motion and a second.
I move we adopt the agenda as amended for the September 18th meeting of the Planning Commission.
Nadia, seconds.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as modified for today's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I just got online. Can you hear me? This is John Orr. Hello.
Okay, John, I can hear you. We just modified the agenda because at the last meeting, we passed the August 11th minutes. So we have just adopted the agenda with that modification. So now that you're on board.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Do we wish to add Pamela Madsen-McDonald to people present at this meeting?
They can do that right now because of the fact that there's business from the public. I'm going to put that into the agenda right now. So business from the public, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda. So Gail, do we have anybody who signed up to speak on those issues?
We do not.
Thank you. So we'll move to the code consolidation and modernization.
Okay, so just a bit of an update on that. Joanna is in the process of reviewing the different articles that we consolidated. She's gone through all of them except Article 4, which she and I are working on now. And I would anticipate that in September, so maybe late October or early November, that may be going before the Board of Commissioners for our first hearing.
Okay, so were there any other comments from people about the code consolidation and modernization? Hearing none, we'll move to the comprehensive plan update.
Wait, wait, just one quick question.
Okay.
In the review of the revision of the material, have there been any changes? Has there been any need to? Other than just a few, has there been anything different than what we looked at and said, yeah, this looks good?
I can speak to that. This is Joanna. Actually, no, I have to tell you, I've been incredibly impressed by the staff and the level of detail that they had in making sure that each and everything was just a move and not adopting new regulations, not deleting regulations. And there were just a few instances where I found something that didn't look quite right, and I brought it to their attention and they'll either explain it or they'll add it back in if it was a deletion or something like that. So there were very, very minor edits. I have to say 99% of it looked perfect.
That's what we like. We like perfection. That's great. Okay, so let's move to the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, so when we stopped meeting with our citizen advisory committees at the end of December, we had planned a three-month hiatus that got extended a bit. During that hiatus, our job of staff was to prepare some draft revisions for Goals 1 through 4. And we did do that. We sent them off to Department of Land Conservation and Development for their courtesy review. They have provided comments back so far on Goals 1, 3, and 4. Those have been posted on the county's website for several months. I believe that several months ago, I also sent an email out to the different citizen advisory committees and people planning commission members advising them that we had received these comments. So what we would like to do is to get the Planning Commission involved in this plan update process beyond just receiving the updates. We're bringing forward the initial drafts for your review and your comments. You will not be the final say all, end all today because we will make additional revisions and then bring them back to the citizen advisory committees before they will come back to you again. So really, this is just an opportunity for you to provide staff feedback on the draft of Goal 1, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, on the draft of Goal 1, I thought that the DLCD comments were frivolous. I think they were pretty picky. And I kind of found fault in their participation of their number one, which was many governments now say "public participation" because citizen is a word that has been politicized and in some cases weaponized against immigrant and immigrant communities. And then they go straight on in every instance to use CAC. I mean, they're using the acronyms for citizen. I mean, I think they're kind of overstepping and getting picky to try and make that kind of a change when the whole, all of our rules, everything is based around the word citizen. I mean, if you had to change everything, it would be an onerous task. So I think personally that that was an invalid comment, in my opinion. Anyway, I was just wondering if anybody else felt that way, or am I the black sheep in the family?
No, you're not.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agreed totally with the comments and suggested revisions. I thought that the review they gave it was really quite helpful. And I agree with their point about the word citizen, but I'm not committed to the idea of getting rid of it and changing it to public. But I think due to the President of the United States primarily, we've taken that word and really turned it into a bit of a problem for us as a nation. And it's filtered down to the county level, and I think it's terrible. And I put the whole blame on one person at the very top, but we're stuck with it, at least for now. And I don't know, I'd certainly be open to at least in some way addressing that issue upfront in the document. It's a little awkward to change, I admit, the citizen advisory committees and all that terminology that's used, not just in this document, but throughout the county process. And so I'd be cautious about demanding that citizen be removed from every place. But certainly, the people who are not citizens of the United States but live in this county do have a right to be involved. And so "public" is a more accurate description of who may participate and who should be encouraged to participate in county matters. And I think some of the other comments that were made, but maybe I should leave it to this one comment, we can finish a discussion on that. But I have some other particular ones, suggestions that were made by the DLC review. And I'm not saying I think that the document was really poor in that it needed that review, but I found their look at it very helpful in a few places. So I'll leave it at that for now in case somebody else wants to chime in on the public versus citizen issue.
Okay, Nadia, you go ahead.
Um, actually, I was really happy that the DLCD was forward-thinking enough to flag that first thing because I also flagged that the first time I saw it. So those organizations that have gone through a diversity, equity, and inclusion process in current days, and you know, a lot of groups are really interested in that with the Black Lives Matter movement, which I'm very supportive of, are changing that use. For example, with my friends at Cape Falcon Marine Reserve Group, historically, we used the word "citizen science", and that was, you know, when we were doing bird monitoring, marine debris, or whatever. And we were encouraged by Portland Audubon, who's been doing a lot of diversity work to change that to "community science". So, and it's really thinking of it as more of like an inclusive term, like anybody who identifies as a community member, whether they are a resident or a vacation homeowner or a frequent visitor or a one-timer, has some stake in our communities. And so we actually are really enjoying using that term. And so like, you know, public participation is a very kind of like wonky, you know, planning term. But we could think about other ways of talking about it. And I mean, it's really a matter of find and replace from a, like editing standpoint. It shouldn't be too burdensome. But I think it's, I mean, it's one way that we can show our commitment to being more inclusive in this time that we're recognizing that a lot of people have been excluded. And I will, I do think that our county and, you know, the representation in this room should show us that we have an exclusive culture in our county. And so any small steps that we can take are welcome, I think. On that same note, I think that the diversity section could really be strengthened. It says, you know, it's very passive. I want to know exactly how the county will proactively invite participation from diverse elements of our community, not just, you know, putting stuff on Facebook, but actually reaching out to underrepresented groups. I'd like to see more discussion about that. Also, there are several places that talk about residents as being the people that matter. And I think that residents do, but as I said, I think, you know, at least landowners should be included in that also. So who is it that should be invited? Is it just, is it, you know, the landed gentry? Or is it residents, whether they be renters or not? Is it visitors? Is it vacation homeowners? You know, so I think we should think more carefully about the uses of those words.
Okay, well, my comment on that is that diversity, I think we're getting into our group because the Asian group is only 1.2%, but we have an Asian representative on our commission. So I think that we are definitely trying to get diversity, and I think we've accomplished it, only 1.2% in the community. We do have an Asian representative. Also.
Nadia has brought up the word "houseless", you know, just as an interesting broadening of who gets considered. Because I think when we've done studies of housing, anyone who was on the margins has largely been dismissed as being of no interest to the powers that be. So I'm trying to be supportive of Nadia's introduction of the word "houseless"
Okay.
in our lexicon.
Well, going back to the word "citizen", you know, I've got to take the other side because I'm an Australian citizen, and I've never ever felt excluded. And I do feel slighted. I feel that I'm part of the community, and I've served for 30 years in this community. So I believe that, you know, using the word "citizen" is not a bad way to operate because it's entitled me to be part of the community, and it's entitled me to be on this commission for, what, 27 or 28 years? So I think I've been included. I'm just saying, I don't feel I've been slighted just because the word "citizen" is there and I'm not a citizen. Anyway, are there any other comments?
This is Myrna, and I agree with you. I think the word "citizen" is all-encompassing. I think too many people take too much frustration with those of trying to include everybody. I think citizen does, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And this is John Orr, if I may speak. The term "citizen" has deep roots in our political culture, and I think it serves a worthwhile purpose. And while laudable to recraft language or definitions according to current sensibilities, I don't agree with changing it. People will always, you know, read what they will into particular words. And that's what I have to say about it.
Nadia, you had your hand up?
So other comments I had listed were digital opportunities. So, gosh, COVID has really forced our hand, hasn't it? And I think the county has done a good job of making these meetings be able to be seen even before COVID on computers. But it would be great that when we go back, and I look forward to the, you know, next summer, when we're able to get together again after there's a vaccine, hopefully, that there be even more of that. So, you know, what would be great for me as a parent and someone who lives 45 minutes from the county is if we could regularly participate if needed digitally, both as committee members, but also have the public be able to attend and give comment online. That would allow more participation for those of us who have or are challenged to get to meetings at particular times in particular locations. And then, so I don't know if that needs to be discussed further, but in the document itself, but that's something. Also, I really appreciated Linda Ironman's comments in the packet. I'm just looking at, that's page, starting at page 54. She is an attorney who lives down in Arch Cape. I have a lot of admiration for her. She was involved in our community advisory committee for many years. And so has just like a lot of knowledge about, you know, how the Arch Cape group worked and what was lost when that was dissolved. And she pointed out to me that the intention was that the Planning Commission then takes over a lot of the tasks that that community advisory committee did and really be the place that community involvement happens. I don't think that has been the case. And so how do we make sure that? I feel like, you know, we barely have applications, even though there's tons of applications going through the county staff. But then there's these projects that end up being controversial, like the short-term rental project and the Lewis and Clark Mainline project and the moving of the public works. Like, why can't we be a place that the county work, you know, brings the public to for things like that that definitely relate to planning issues in the county? And I feel like sometimes we're seen as more of a burden than a help. But I feel like sometimes if you get out in front of some of those issues and you make a public venue available, then at least, and maybe people show up or maybe they don't, but at least you've shown that you're committed to public participation ahead of time before it might become a problem like what's happened now with the Lewis and Clark project. So, and I know that during this comp plan process, there has been some discussion about bringing back the CACs in some of these local communities. I think right now, it just says, maybe bring them together once a year. Maybe in some areas that's sufficient, but it feels to me like very weak. And I feel like there should be more discussion about, you know, whether those should be brought back and what capacity, what would they do? And if they're not brought back, then we need to be really activated as the place that the community is invited to be involved in a lot of these important decisions that are made.
Okay, does anybody else have comments?
Well, I certainly agree with Nadia's point on this business about citizen advisory groups. I think that, that, that those kinds of bodies distributed around the county make a lot of sense. The Planning Commission does tend to do its work right in Astoria, even though we're online now. But it doesn't seem that accessible for some of the far-flung corners of our county. Jewel-Elsey area is really quite distant, and it's not easy for them to get to meetings and make their opinions well-known. And you look out to the east, to Brownsmead and on beyond to Westport. I just think having the opportunity for those local communities to develop their small committees of people that could interact more directly with the Board of Commissioners or through the Planning Commission, either way, I think that's something that really should be part of our county's organization. And I agree that Linda Ironman's letter was very well-written and very, very helpful in getting that kind of thinking across. And I'd just like to see the citizen advisory committees be part of the plan. And I have some other comments about the Goal 1 in general, but I don't know if anybody else wants to get in on this point about citizen advisory committees or not. So I'll hold off.
Well, my only comments on that would be to say that if you take that point of view, I agree, it's nice to have citizen involvement, but I would also like to defend our staff on how much time and effort they have put in there to secure committees, to get people to sign up and to run, help run those committees. There's been a lot of staff time and a lot of effort. And I think that the county has made an effort to revise and get participation in all four corners. As Nadia said, the COVID has thrown us into this technical situation where anybody can make contact with the county and participate in this meeting. When I asked for business from the public, once again, I didn't get anybody for this meeting or the last. So I don't think that, you know, we can blame staff or the fact that county is not making an effort. I think we really are. I think that it's just in a hard time where people, many who were on the CACs, said that they wanted to retire from them. I think it's very frustrating that we're not face-to-face and able to support each other because just being online, I think, makes it a little bit harder to have that involvement. But I agree with what you're saying, Chris. It's just that I'm saying, I think that the staff have definitely made an earnest attempt to achieve that goal. Any other comments?
Can we perhaps strengthen the business of public piece of our Planning Commission meetings? In other words, rather, you know, just to welcome, you know, the people lurking in the background like Pamela Madsen-McDonald, who is here, you know, but kind of pull, you know, that's a serious aspect of ours, not to squelch and say, okay, you have three minutes now, speak your piece, shut up. But they're an elemental piece of our citizen involvement of being welcomed at these meetings. That you don't have to have a separate meeting, that we're interested in what you have to say, whether you're coming from Birkenfeld or Falcon Cove. We, and it doesn't have to be on the agenda, other than that it's welcoming hearing from the peeps and the boondocks.
Yeah, I just had a couple of points. One, I didn't mean to suggest that the staff hasn't worked very diligently at bringing people into the process of revising the comprehensive plan. But, and they've done a really good job on that. And I think I've emailed Gail a couple of times congratulating on the messages I hear on the radio and that I see in the newspaper and so on. So I'm thinking they're doing a very good job at that. I think part of the lack of enthusiasm for participating is the fact that the CACs that we have right now are dedicated to a process that's rather onerous, and that's the revision of the comprehensive plan. I don't, I'm talking about a citizens advisory committee that's standing, that it's there all the time. And we don't know what issues will come up. It might be over some particular development in a particular part of the county, or it might be a more broad issue that affects the entire county. But they could take it up locally and then bring it before the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners. And that's different than dedicating a couple of years of your life to revising some very convoluted language document that's this comprehensive plan. That's, that kind of stuff is a turnoff to a lot of people. Yet a lot of people would like to participate more directly in an advisory capacity in a more fluid and casual kind of way, taking on various issues and not having to word things precisely to be a very important document that regulates land use in the county, which is what the comprehensive plan is. It's just not for everybody.
I agree with that, Chris. I think you make a very valid point. And that's something that I've noticed over the years. And Robert has noticed over the years as we've reviewed this comprehensive plan. It takes a certain type of person to have to want to read through and make the changes of a very dry subject. So I agree, that's a very valid point. Okay, are there any other comments on this? Gail, did you want to comment on the memorandum? That was Linda Ironman's comments of Goal 1 draft?
Gail's computer has frozen, and she is in the process of restarting. So she is not online with you right at the moment. She will be there shortly. This is Julia. I'm just stepping in to say that.
Yeah, good. Question, I'm wondering if we could invite the executive director of Conejo Hispano, which is the newly rebranded Hispanic council, to come and speak to us on citizen involvement, the use of the word "citizen", but also, because her community is the Hispanic or Latino, we are just community of color or ethnic, different ethnicity here in our county. And I'd like to hear, you know, what she thinks about inviting participation from her communities in this process.
Have you found that she feels that they're not part of the community or not invited into this? I mean, I would. I mean, I would definitely like to hear from a representative like that. Um, maybe they could enlighten us to ways to involve them more. So I, I personally would like to see that. So Gail, it's, you're back? Uh, you're not, you gotta un, you gotta unmute. We see you, but we don't hear you.
All right, sorry about that. I changed my entire format. I had to look for the mute button. So I'm sorry, I only just rejoined, so I'm not sure if you had a question for me.
Yep, um, Nadia brought up a very good point about involving uh the community uh of ethnicity diversification and said that we would like to have. Uh, a representative speak to us at one of the meetings and I agree, I think that would be a good outreach. Um, and then I had asked. Whether you would be in favor of inviting somebody to speak at our next meeting or the meeting afterwards?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have a recommendation for who you would like to have come and speak with you?
Yeah, the, the executive director of uh Conejo Hispano, which is the Hispanic Council's new name.
Yeah, Jenny Radway-Pull or Paul Radway.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
All right.
Or someone from her staff if she's not available. And maybe we could provide her with this citizen involvement and ask her about the question of citizen. As well as why, with ways we can improve um involvement and improve this section.
Okay, so then the other thing I asked Gail was the memorandum from Linda Ironman. Um, I was wondering if you had comments to make on that?
I do not, no.
Okay, personally, I thought it was a good letter. I liked the way that it summed up many of the aspects that I was reading. So I thought it was very good information to give to us. Okay, is there any other point of view? Uh, Chris, you had some on, on the goal one?
Uh, yeah, just going back to diversity for a minute, you know. I don't know if that word is restricted to be just um. The concept of. A person's national origin or what some people like to still use as the word race, which. I don't think genetically has any validity really, but. To me, diversity goes beyond that and I wonder if we shouldn't expand. The discussion of diversity to. The idea of including. Members of our county that are in different walks of life. You know, they have different professions. Uh, there's an art community, there's uh. The more natural resource-based people, there's uh. People that are in the non-governmental organization kind of realm and. I think it's important to recognize that. Having a diversity um. Can be as important in. Things like that and, and what people do in their lives and where they come from uh originally. If they're from within the United States, for example. There's, there's people that have lived here all their lives in Astoria, for example, or, or within the county, but then there's people that bring outside. Perspectives because they've spent years living in some other state. I think those kinds of things are good to try to include a, a range of people. So that you get a, a, a better representation of who actually. Lives here in the county and it's not just. Uh, based around a racial mix and the fact that our county is so. Very white makes it difficult because you can't divide people up into pieces. To, to make sure that you have three percent of this and, and seven percent of that represented on a committee. Um, just broadening the definition of diversity ensures that. You really will have uh. A wide range of opinions that represent. The wide range of opinions that our county is made up of, so.
Well, I think, I think that uh Gail can already uh attest to that because of the selection of people for the planning commission is based upon your locality. And what your background is. We don't have uh too many realtors uh coming on to a planning commission because that could be advantageous. Uh, so there definitely is diversity that's already put into the application process. For being on the planning commission, so you do get that diversity just from the rules that the county has put in there. Gail, would you like to expand on that?
Well, I guess, I, I guess I'm just saying maybe we should just put in a sentence or two saying that. That's what we do to add to the diversity. We do these other things to, to ensure that it's important to put that down, I think. And I recognize that, that that is a good approach that this county, and I don't know if other counties do it. By having the different geographies and, and only a certain number of people that live within a city and. Right, so on, I'm, I, I think those are very good provisions.
That promotes diversity. Nadia?
I don't think we have a problem with that. And so what I think that is, is distracting from what we're trying to do, which is. Include underrepresented people in our county governance. And underrepresented people are low-income people. People who, you know, have to work and can't go to a bunch of, you know, meetings and volunteer all the time. Like most of us in our room are privileged in that way and so um. And then, and then people, people of color and in some cases women. And younger people who are, who are regularly discriminated against in our county as well and, and people uh in the LGBT community as well. So I think it's important that we define diversity that way and not distract ourselves with. Oh, well, we're diverse if we have different jobs or if we're from, you know, it, it's like, we do have diversity in terms of that stuff already. It's the people that are being excluded and I'm not pointing fingers at any one person. It's the institution of the county. That is the way that it's been set up over time and its history, its racist history, just like the rest of Oregon. That um, that has, you know, has made it that, you know. That I know of, Lamb is the only Asian person of color in an appointed position or elected position in the whole county. And then um in Seaside, they have Tita Montero, who's a Puerto Rican American, I believe, or. Um, is the only Latina um, you know, so if, that we have like. That we have such underrepresentation um shows clearly that we have a problem. And so um, you know, it's, I think it makes us as white privileged people more comfortable when we start talking about other kind of diversity. But the reality is um. It, you know, if we really want to make a difference in, in creating an inclusion cult, inclusive culture, we have to talk about. Blackness and race and ethnicity and other like truly underrepresented groups and we have to talk about it frankly.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, it'll like, like under thirty years old, you know. How many, when was the last time you heard anyone considered for the planning commission? You know, not by people who apply, but by people who appoint. Uh, who was. Kind of non-geriatric, uh, Nadia and Gail excluded. Um, you know, they. Just, I, I know we've had in the past. Youthful. Uh, service employee apply. But they, they lost interest from one decade to the next. Yeah, and it'd be kind of fun to hear the point of view of a. A kid from the college. You know, the, the, it starts looking like a Methodist congregation.
I, I've been involved in city and county governance since I was twenty-five years old. And I will say, you know, I'm forty-five now and um probably Lamb and I are the same age, but it's interesting that you identified me as younger and him as not. And um, but I will say that gender and ageism, you know, sexism and ageism go hand in hand in our county and um I faced it numerous times. In my volunteer and work service here. Um, and. So that, you know, that's definitely a true thing and it's funny because in the county, people are always lamenting about how young people are not getting involved, that they're not taking over for the next generation. But then they turn around and they discriminate against them and they disrespect them all the time. So um, you know, we have an issue with ageism. Especially as it intersects with sexism for sure. And that part of that is that the, you know, the. The skewing like in a place like Cannon Beach, which is where I started my service. Um, where it's like, you know, all people over sixty-five, like I'm their kid's age and they don't think of. They just always will think of me as young and my response to, to them now is, I'm not young, I'm just younger than you and you're getting old. You know, because it's so frustrating to constantly get that kind of discrimination in your life.
So Nadia, who are you soliciting to take your place? You know, you're looking at younger people and you're saying that you're old.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not, every time there's an opening on this, uh, on this uh commission, I'm, I'm helping to spread the word and I'm encouraging people to apply, but I'm currently. Not needing anyone to take my place. But I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, you know, we need to be looking at uh getting younger people. I agree with you. And it's all relative, you know.
Well.
Is forty-five old? I mean.
No, I'm only, I'm, I'm like less than halfway, halfway, so I don't think so, but, but I also don't. I, I think I have, you know, multiple years of experience doing the work that I do and so when people point out that you're young. It's a way of disrespecting you. And um, yeah, and so um.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful by uh saying you're forty-five. I very much wish I was forty-five again. Uh, when you lose the years, you always look like you would like to get back to forty-five. But uh, I think that it's a valid point in what you're saying, that we need to try to get younger people. To apply. I've, I've tried that myself. I've tried it in my own association. I've tried it on other boards. I've really tried to include. And I do not feel that I disrespect younger people. There are many, many bright younger people. Who would do as good a job or better than what I would be doing. So I definitely encourage it. Uh, younger people have got quick minds, they're bright, they've got plenty of energy. I'm all for it. I would like to bring them in. So I, I agree with.
The other point of it is where you are in your life, right? So if you have to work full-time and you have young children. Like myself, I'm a, I'm like drowning myself under my obligations and having a young child under COVID. Like this is a, is very challenging time for us who have young kids and um. So you can't have expectations that the same number of people will come out that are in those places in their lives um. During, you know, when they have to work full-time and have children, especially when school is closed. Um, but the, I think the technology thing could really help, so hopefully that'll get us there.
Good. Okay, any other comments?
I would love the. I would love to see as many as four people just simply in the audience, uh, like Pamela is today. Uh, you know, in kind of a role of. Do you have any wisdom to share with us? You know, we, we may have the power of a vote, but I don't think we would disrespect it all. Uh, hearing the thoughts of a fifteen-year-old, a twenty-two-year-old, a. Uh, you know, just. A few people. Who are present in the audience as respected advisors to us. You know, and I, 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 I know it hasn't been the culture to. Encourage people to come by, you know, the nearest thing to it is when the. Daily Astoria reporter sits back there and, and listens. Uh, but you know, it, it just seems like, like we could say, hey, we'd love to have you here. Try us out, see if we honor you by. Showing interest in what your thoughts are. You know, you, you may not have the vote. But we will certainly listen to every. Thing that you care to express to us. And you know, in a, in a serious, interactive relationship.
Okay, so is there anything else on goal one? All right, so let's move on to the special projects update. Gail, what do we have on that?
All right, pass the mic.
On the special projects update?
Yeah, yeah, hold on. Let me get down there. So basically I had provided a memo that gave all the updates. Um, I don't know if anybody had any questions. I can certainly, I think there may be a few updates from this. Uh, so on September first, we did have our work session with the Board of Commissioners. And that was to talk about um several different issues that are kind of converging in the class of planes area. Uh, the item was for informational purposes only and to make the board aware of uh those issues, so there were no actions or directive given at that meeting. Uh, the short-term rental session is now the first one, uh, went forward to the board. I'm trying to think what we discussed at that meeting. Oh, we just gave them an update um about the Falcon Cove Beach uh short-term rental meeting that we had done back in July. Again, that was presented for informational purposes only, so there was no direction or uh decisions made by the board at that work session. The follow-up work session that was supposed to be held on September ninth has now been postponed to January fifth. Uh, there are a couple of reasons for that. Uh, the first reason was that we needed to meet with some other department staff uh who had expressed some concerns. About changes that we might make uh to the ordinance. Uh, so to make sure that everybody on the staff side had the same information and understood what was being requested. Uh, and then also because of scheduling, uh, just the county manager made the decision that it would be better to postpone that discussion until the new. Two new uh commissioners-elect were installed in January. Uh, the strategic plan, uh, there was a work session with the board on August twenty-fifth. Uh, during which they identified these five focus areas, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality, governance and social services. So the focus groups now are um being formed and meeting. Uh, the, I know that the governance and economic groups have met. Uh, we're working with Commissioner Webb to set up an environmental quality. Uh, focus group meeting sometime next week or the week after. Uh, once those committees have completed their work, uh, then those recommendations will be going back to the full board. The board will be prioritizing them and deciding which ones to work on over the next twelve to eighteen months. And then uh when the new board is installed in January, then they're, they will re-review and reprioritize if needed uh the items that came out of this focus group. Uh, our tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, uh, we have completed our negotiation work with consultants. I have some documents upstairs that need to be signed by the county manager and returned to ODOT and then at that point, the consultant will begin their work. I would expect that over the course of the next year that uh you'll be seeing some notices uh for different types of open houses and public involvement. Uh, as we go through this process. Uh, the childcare code barriers project was um something that DLCD reached out to staff about. Uh, we've signed our contract with them so they can do an audit of our code. To see uh where we might be out of compliance with state law regarding home daycare facilities. And I have not had any communication uh with them since May of twenty-twenty, so I do not have anything to update about that. Uh, co-consolidation, we have talked about, uh, resiliency project. Resiliency project, we did have our information meeting in August. Monica, the surveys did go out, there were questionnaires, which have caused a lot of confusion and consternation in some areas. We did have Assistant County Manager Monica Steele address the countywide advisory committee yesterday about this project. And the Assistant County Manager and Public Works Staff are scheduled to give you a presentation at your October meeting. The COVID-nineteen housing recommendations, we did present that to the Board of Commissioners in August at a work session. They did not take any action and I've spoken with the county manager about this. In terms of timing, the earliest that there might be some sort of joint session with the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners to discuss this further with the October. I would suspect that it might be even later, possibly into the new year after the new board is installed. That concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had a couple of.
Yeah, Gail, that's, that's an incredible presentation. You have definitely been busy. Chris, go ahead.
I had a couple of quick questions about the resiliency project. I heard Monica's presentation yesterday. I wondered if she's considered giving a similar presentation to the actual Lewis and Clark Citizen Advisory Committee, because there does seem to be a lot of local concern there. And this might be a, a body that would be more, more in tune with exactly what, what's going on in their community and what their concerns are about it. I guess we've lost a few members of that CAC though, is that correct?
Just one, Jim Coghlan resigned.
Okay, so how many people sit on that now?
We have four and we are advertising for a fifth.
Well, I just thought maybe it makes sense, maybe it would get some locals to attend that smaller meeting. There didn't seem to be very many at, at the meeting yesterday. The other question around the resiliency thing is, in Monica's presentation, someone asked her how it's being funded. And I thought she said that it was pretty much out of the general fund of the county. And I noticed though in our packet for today, there's, there's some mention there that some grants were applied for that relate to the resiliency project. And I was wondering if, if those grants came to fruition for us? And if so, is that a significant source of money for the, the work to be done?
I apologize because I'm not familiar with the item in your packet that talks about that grant funding. Could you point me towards that, please, Chris?
It'd take me a while to find it. I thought it was in our packet in, in, in these pages around sixty-three or sixty-four. Maybe it's in the material from yesterday, I'm not sure. I've had too many meetings. So it's something I'll follow up with later, no, no point in taking time here.
Could it be, Chris, I was a little confused, the difference between the tsunami evacuation facilities plan and that? I saw there's, there is a grant for that, I think, but not for, I didn't see one for resiliency.
Oh, well, maybe I, I may have thought that the tsunami evacuation plan was just a piece of the resiliency plan. But I guess they're two different things. Maybe somebody would like to enlighten me on that.
Yeah, so the tsunami evacuation facilities improvement program or improvement plan is a grant that was awarded through the Transportation Growth Management Program, which is a joint program between Department of Land Conservation and Development and Oregon Department of Transportation. And what we are looking at specifically is ways that we can improve our evacuation routes so that they just don't sit there idle throughout decades, which is good, don't get me wrong. But that we can find ways to turn them into multi-use paths that can get more use and increase our recreation opportunities. So it's not looking at roads, which is part of what the resiliency project had identified in turning the main lines into alternate county roads. So two very separate and distinct projects.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm so pleased to hear that we're pursuing that more vigorously because I think Robert and I brought that up, gosh, it's got to be thirty-eight years ago, I think it is, Robert. So, you know, when Crown Zellerback was getting rid of their properties and selling it, I think I made the statement that we should acquire the main line from Black Bridge through to John Day. And I said, you'll get it for a song and it definitely be an advantage for evacuations and bypassing the busy centers on the coast. And the commission, when I made that recommendation, said, we want a wish list, we don't want a wish list. We want fundamentals. And I came back to them and said, well, in ten years' time, you're going to wish that you had acquired that. So I'm glad to see that we're making moves in that direction because that is long overdue. It's definitely going to be an advantage to the county to do that. All right, any other questions? If not, let's look at the project status report. Nadia, what's going to happen with that cafe down there? We're running out of time for Arch Cape. Have you heard anything on whether it's going to move forward? The deli?
No, I'm, and, and I'm, no.
You haven't? Oh, okay. Just thought you might have some inside information on that.
No.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Other business? County Council review of HB two thousand and one, House Bill two thousand and one.
Actually, I think Joanna will be addressing that one.
Okay, let's go with Joanna on that one then, sorry Joanna.
No, no problem. So this is Joanna Lyons-Antley, I'm the county council. You all, I understand, maybe at the last, maybe not the last, last meeting, but the one before that, had asked for a legal review of House Bill two thousand and one, which was passed in two thousand and nineteen. So I reviewed the House bill and it looks like it does not apply directly to counties. Really, per the new law, only cities that have populations of more than ten thousand and local governments as part of a metropolitan service district are required to comply with the new regulations to allow middle housing. And so currently, we don't, Classic County doesn't have any cities that have population more than ten thousand. Although I will note, of course, that story is pretty close. So if in fact it does come over the, that threshold ten thousand population mark, we will be prepared to assist. But they're, they again will be the primary mover of this regulation. But basically, they do allow, the, the law does allow for an alternative processing for allowing conversions into, of single-family residences into four dwelling units. And it's a alternative process, like I said. And so the county building official, where, where we exercise our authority, will need to be aware of the process. So overall, I would say it doesn't really apply to the county at this point, but we will continue to monitor the situation. And when it does become something that we need to be aware of, we're certainly happy to bring it back to you. So you can be aware of the situation as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, although I'm not an expert in this, this regulation. I just happen to see that it does not apply.
Okay.
Just one quick question on, on the population figure. Astoria is very close and I'm just wondering, we're, we're involved in a census right now on a national scale. And a number will come out for Astoria from that. But also we get, I think they're annual updates from Portland University, I think, provides that information. So at, at what point, do you happen to know at what point is a population figure applied? Is it only under the official ten-year census definition? Or, or is it these updated ones that are either annual or else they're every other year? I don't know.
I would have to defer to planning, but it's generally my understanding that they do use the Portland State numbers for regulation. But again, I'm deferring to planning because I'm just speaking of what I think it is. Maybe they could help with that number.
Thanks.
And to follow up on that, I actually don't know the answer to that, so I would have to check and get back to you.
So Chris, once again, you bring up a really good question that nobody can answer. But we will look at it.
I'm full of a lot of those, I could take up the whole day with them.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much, Joanna.
Thank you.
So then we'll look at the discussion item Affordable Housing Fund. Gail, are you going to pick us up on that one?
Okay, so a few months ago, Commissioner Strickland had put forward an email to the Planning Commission members about the possible creation of an affordable housing fund. I did include a copy of his email in the packet. And I would actually defer to Mr. Strickland so that he could discuss his, his email.
Yeah, Robert, you want to comment on that?
Sure. The concept is short and I'm trying to move down, there it comes. After my name, it just says, in adopting each fiscal year budget and so on. I, I will go ahead and read it just to simplify things. But the, the essence is, as a community, do we feel like giving a half of one percent of our treasury toward truly affordable housing? This is not market-driven. The things that I usually see are ugly, they're instant slums. They're like the new one over there near Home Depot. They profess to be cheaply constructed, stacking three stories high for ease of construction. But it's still a, a market-driven process. And what I'm suggesting is not market-driven. I'm going to go ahead and read it just quickly. In adopting each fiscal year's budget and capital program, the county commission shall appropriate a minimum of one-half of one percent of the total property taxes certified for collection to a fund known as the Affordable Housing Fund. Revenues in this fund shall be utilized to acquire and fund operations of dwellings within the county of six hundred square feet or less for management through a public agency at a rental rate of thirty percent of occupants' federal adjusted gross income. Any balance remaining in this fund at the end of the fiscal year shall not lapse, but shall remain in the fund accumulating from year to year. The revenue in this fund shall not be used for any purpose except those listed in this section. This does not have any effect on school taxation. You know, this is strictly the county's taxes. It uses quite long ago was a kind of a standard of what's really affordable. And that was around thirty percent of income. So I, I, I'm happy to answer anything on this. I've mentioned to Chris, I, I'd be surprised if any people really care. But this is not, this is not getting together, you know, where we pay sixty thousand dollars for consultants to get together all the local contractors to say, how can we get our land use planning to build a bunch of crap for market-rate housing? No, this is this, this is where it's driven by affordability. And these can be beautifully designed, well-architected. So, so that, that was the concept. And just as a tiny bit of background, you know, when I was younger than the youngest member of our panel, I did supervise a thousand fifty-four crappy apartments. And, you know, so I've, I've had some experience in this realm. And that, that's kind of the background of where I came up with this. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm not pushing it. There is no organization that's trying to put this on the ballot. It was, it was really designed as something that three county commissioners could say, okay, let's put this to a vote and see what happens. And that certainly hasn't happened. You know, it, it could be thrown on, on any, any election that's already scheduled to come up. Just to see, you know, throw it against the wall and see what happens. But that, that, that's the essence, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How much is one, how much is one-half percent of the, of the property tax?
Pardon me?
How much money are we talking about?
Yeah, you'd, you'd have to look, click on the budget and look at it, I'm, I'm not sure. But it's half of one percent of the actual county, you know, it is straight from the Monica's records, you know, publicly available. Looking down, it's not, it's not about schools. It's just taking a half of one percent of whatever it is, yes, Nadia?
Why not do the other, the X, the other way, though, like the way that Cannon Beach does it with new construction? Like, I, I kind of like.
Yeah, because basically that was for twenty years that it all then goes to market-rate housing. They make it sound like, oh, we're going to do so good, we're going to build this in the woods behind the, behind the city hall. And after twenty years, it isn't affordable anymore. Whoever, whoever did the investment got their tax breaks as a so-called affordable housing project. Yeah, and then suddenly.
I'm not talking about that part, so I'm just talking about the money raising part. So instead of taking part of our current budget, our general funds that come from property taxes, I'm talking about, instead of doing that, put it as a kind of a fee on new construction and then you build an account and then maybe you use that money, you don't have to use that money the way Cannon Beach used that money. You could use it in a different way. But the actual mechanism of gathering new money versus, versus, you know, taking it out of the general fund that we currently have. And I kind of like the way they do it. I mean, I have a friend who's building an outrageously expensive house in Cannon Beach right now. And the more expensive your house is, the more you pay. And so it ends up being a progressive tax, you know, so that you, you know, which is how property taxes are theoretically anyway, except Measure Five messed that all up. But the more, so the, the fancier, you know, the more expensive your property is, the more you pay into the fund, is the way it works. And so, and it's only on new construction and you could do it where if it's multifamily construction, they're exempt or something. Because one of the problems with doing it that currently is it could discourage, you know, new middle housing, which is what we don't want to discourage right now. But, but I just, it's hard to take money right now from what we currently have, right? Because we have so many competing needs in our county.
There, there has always been a little contingency amount that was sitting there untouched. And then as soon as anyone would say, oh, but we might use that for something, there was a tendency in our county process to, to get rid of that contingency amount. But actually, when this was, was dreamed up, was back when we were doing the county, what's, what's the thing called? The, our, our long range. you know, county what's the damn thing called, Christopher? That we yeah, and basically, no one wanted to talk about anything except making sure that our county commissioners were fairly compensated for their trips from Arch Cape to Astoria. You know, there was no one wanting to discuss affordable housing. And yet, there was clearly plenty of money there untouched for this little 1/2 of 1% that was really going into truly affordable housing. That was not just simply a hot deal for our usual builders in the county.
Well, personally, I like Nadia's approach. I don't think you can take money from it, even if there is a slush fund available. You know, I personally think that this would have to go on the ballot and be an increase in tax.
Why would it be an increase in tax?
Well, you need an extra half. If we're not going to compromise the county budget in any way by putting that half a percent in there, if we're not going to draw on other tax items, you'd have to increase the taxes to fulfill this new half a percent requirement.
There's always an unspent pile of money sitting there that was not demanding an increase of tax to go spend. Just like now, when they're talking about a new freeway on Classic Ridge, they're saying, oh, the money is sitting there.
Wow. Well, I was unaware that the county had volumes of money sitting and not being used.
That's what Monica was saying, that we don't have to do any bonding. It's a sitting there in a slush fund, ready to spend on a Classic Ridge freeway or wherever else you want to spend it.
Yeah. Well
Another consideration on this is a little longer range. Presumably, taking a half percent of the property tax, and that's not all the revenue the county gets, that's one source of revenue is property tax. Taking a half percent of that, hopefully, over years of time, if this housing were constructed, it would reduce costs in other parts of the county that are spent dealing with the fact that people don't have adequate housing. And that can range from, you know, issues, healthcare issues, childcare issues, vagrancy issues, all those kinds of things that right now we're dealing with. And so settling the difficulties with finding decent housing around here for people that don't have a big income will save money in the long run. So it's like an investment. And of course, there would be a lag time of probably a decade before you'd really see that come out. But it'd be interesting to analyze what potentially this could lead to in savings. And then the other question is, comparing Nadia's concept versus Robert's, what's the differential in the amount of money that would be generated in a given year? I'm sure nobody knows that answer, so that's another one of my no-answer questions.
No-answer questions, yeah. That's good. Nadia, go.
Can we agree as a group, like by consensus, that creating a fund like this, deciding later the source, is a good idea?
What's everybody? Yeah, if it's half a percent, I think that it's a good thing.
What's the approximate figure, given the current budget?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from John Orr on this one. John's got a lot of expertise in this field. John, what are your comments on this?
Well, I think in theory, it's a good idea to have a contingency fund or a fund on which to draw for this purpose. But on a practical note, I personally would like to know what one-half of 1% of the current county budget would be, and that's probably more easily accessed by others than me, just so I know.
Public information, just on the county budget, just going to the county website.
Yeah.
I think it's being presented on the screen right now.
Yeah, it's being presented on the screen right now. Yep.
Oh, yeah, I'm on phone. Can anybody read that to me? Or do the, put it on a calculator and spit it out?
Yeah. Go, Gail.
Okay. So as I understand Robert's proposal, it's to take a half a percent of the property taxes, not the total county budget, but just the property taxes that are collected. Is that correct?
Strictly county, not schools, correct?
Right, right. So the amount of taxes that were collected in 2019 was 9.3 million. Half a percent of that would be 465,000.
Thank you, Gail.
And these funds would be dedicated, how? I mean, what specific account or mechanism or account management? If anyone knows.
Yeah, through any, through any public agency, whether it's a brand-new one or someone with experience operating rental properties, cared to have it, but it'd be through a public agency.
Would it be a county public agency?
It doesn't matter. Any public agency.
Well
Yeah. I'm not quite following that one.
One is your confusion, Bruce, about any public agency that cares to do it.
Okay. So what, how does the public agency get to use the money? I think that's what John was trying to
By its choice of building new properties that are well-designed or by otherwise acquiring them. I would think ideally, it would be, they would hire an architect and try and have attractive, not ugly, housing that people would be glad to have in their neighborhoods, that then are rented for 30% of federal AGI.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. Nadia.
So to me, there's several questions here. There's, do we think we should have this fund? Where should the money come from? How would it be used? And also, how might we collaborate with cities, which are more appropriate for high-density housing? And I think what we're looking for today is just kind of like, oh, yeah, we think this is a good idea, and us deciding by consensus to schedule a work session to go through each of those things. So we could ask staff to do research about options for each of those things, and then come back with fuller information and make a recommendation to the county commission from that point.
Well, Nadia, if you can get with Gail and organize that, I think that would be a good thing for you to do.
Oh, I'm not going to do that, but that's what they're asking us to do in their staff report.
Yeah, yep.
Is to decide by consensus that this is important to us and, you know, ask staff to help with that.
Well, I think John was for it, Robert's for it, Chris is for it, I believe you're for it, and I was for it.
I did have a question, actually. I still have a question. It seems to me if it's county money, it would be county oversight. And Commissioner Strickland said, just said simply, that it would be managed by a public entity. And that's fine in theory, but I think it's appropriate and right for that agency or entity handling county funds to be administered or receive oversight from a county agency.
What does Classic Community Action do, for example?
Hey, I'm sorry.
What, you know, how is Classic Community Action administered? Who currently administers public affordable housing?
I see, I see your point. I see. Well, I guess that would work for me because they're already doing it. They have a track record, and that would probably work for me. I didn't see the bones on the proposal since this is, as I understand it, just a kind of a preliminary discussion. Is that correct?
Right, right. You're exactly right, John. This is a preliminary discussion, but I think that there's enough interest amongst us to put it on the agenda at a later date for better discussion. So I would ask that staff put it on our agenda, and we can come back and discuss it, and we can think about what ways that we can do this, and what agencies should be involved, and how the money will be applied. And I think, you know, they're valid questions to bring up. Okay. Any other comments on Robert's proposal?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess, Gail, we're on to number seven, September 2020 County Development Staff, providing information to Board of Commissioners, Classic Plains.
Yeah, this item and the next are the agenda items that have been presented to the Board of Commissioners. The first one was the discussion at the work session about the Classic Plains Elk Project, which you've been updated on regularly, and then some of those converging issues. So those issues really center primarily, well, maybe not primarily, but one of the biggest issues right now that's impacting that area is water or lack thereof. And in March of this year, the city of Warrenton enacted a moratorium against new water connections outside the city, and we're seeing that now in terms of impacts on developments that have been approved out in the Classic Plains area. So we discussed that. We also discussed briefly, it was a very short presentation in a very short work session where they covered several topics. So we did touch on traffic impacts that will have, are affecting the area, the role of the aquifer and our need to protect it, and the many septic issues that are going on, not just beautification, but also there's a problem with septic college, where we are running out of capacity and having to truck it out of county now, and pretty soon that may not even be viable. So that is a discussion, actually, that the board is going to be having in the next few weeks. I want to say it's October 24th is when they have it scheduled, but I'd have to double-check that. And then just kind of what are the risks as you encourage more development in an area that's in the tsunami inundation zone? And then this was all under that umbrella of the, just a general presentation about elk human interactions on the Classic Plains. So the item was provided for informational purposes only. There's not any action that the Planning Commission needs to take at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think the water is one of the biggest issues, especially at Calaby Lake. We've got a couple of lots that could be developed, and now we're hearing that they would not get water. So to develop that lot, it would come under the county's purview, and I'm kind of curious as to what alternatives could we present to the county that would get passed as potable water? How do you drill a bore or have your own well on a residential lot in a subdivision? You know, I'm kind of looking at this and thinking there are limited opportunities now for the owners of those lots to actually develop them. And I think this potable water situation is a major issue that we need to address. Now, I know that we've talked about catchment from roofs as a potable source. I believe that's in the county stats now. I think I brought that up 12, maybe 15 years ago. Robert, we discussed that, alternative ways of getting water and judging it as potable. I was just wondering if you had any insight as to what the alternatives were, Gail?
So Section 2.400 of our standards document does detail a list of acceptable potable water sources, and I'm trying to bring that up here. Our requirement right now is you have to document 250 gallons of potable water per day, and it has to be from one of our approved sources. And if you give me a minute, I will bring that up here. Okay. So you can put in a public or community water system, and that might be the best option for Calaby Lake area. We will also accept well water, spring water, surface water, and the rain catchback system.
You know, my comment on that is that for a subdivision, it's far more practical to have two well-constructed wells to provide water for that subdivision rather than individual wells and individual septic systems on each lot. And there are a whole lot of reasons for that. I don't, I haven't looked at the geology of that area specifically, but in general, and I don't even know what the lot sizes are, but I imagine they're not more than an acre or two.
Oh, yeah. They're only quarter acre to half acre.
Yeah, so you're pushing, if you leave it up to the homeowner to have their own well drilled and also a septic system on the same lot, that's difficult to do at best. And then when you have neighbors that are trying to do the same thing, it's like some kind of a shell game where you're trying to move things around and make them all fit on the map, and it's very hard to do. Plus, wells are expensive to drill, and it would be better to put the money into two wells for the subdivision and have it a really well-engineered type of intake to the well. Typically, homeowners get wells drilled that just provide the water that meets the requirement, and over time, those wells tend to have problems. They, because of the cost, they don't put in an adequate engineered well screen or gravel pack. The seals may not be well-placed to seal off surface water or seal off zones of poor water. There's all kinds of reasons for it. And for a subdivision, it should have two wells because you always have to work on a well sooner or later. The pump will go out, or the well itself may have a problem, so you need a backup well, you need a standby well if you're supplying for, you know, several people or several households. It's just not a smart idea to have a single well. But I think if the county would get, I guess the agreements have already been done for this project, but if the county could sit down with the developer and try to work out something fair that directs the developer toward that kind of approach of putting in a couple of wells and probably a batch sewer system for those homes, it would go a long way to eliminating problems that are going to come up five, 10, 15 years down the road if everybody's doing their own thing on their own lot.
Robert, go ahead.
I've got a lot of experience with looking at this kind of thing. That's what I did with USG as part of my work was on water systems and water wells.
You haven't had much experience looking at Bucara Estates, which was built in a swamp. And, you know, this is not any news to Bruce. If there were some system to purify fresh water, they have abundant fresh water. There's no lack of water. There's no lack of water. But it's basically, it's a subdivision that could no longer be built. It it was built in a swamp. And there's a lot of water there. And I don't know, reverse osmosis, you know, whatever. There's got to be something where they can take lake water and turn it into we have plenty to drink. We just need to you know, like little campers get to take their gizmo and and purify it. There is no shortage of water. It, you know, it it's keeping it below the house is the biggest issue. You know, the, it is subsiding peat soil. You know, it basically shouldn't be there. You know, this is how they they wind up having a four-inch sewer line all the way from there to the city of Warrenton, running down the middle of Highway one oh one. This isn't what Chris has usually seen in his life of looking at geology.
So Chris, did you, did you understand the problem? We don't have a problem. Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, hearing none. Gail, is there anything else you wish to say?
Uh, no, thank you.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? Anything at all? Yeah, Gail.
Sorry, I do have one other item. Just to kind of give you a heads up on what you're looking at in October. We do have a public hearing scheduled for a meteorological tower out on Nicolai Ridge. So that'll be coming before you. We have the resiliency project update that I talked about. And then we'll also be bringing goal two to you from the comp plan review for you to review and comment on. The request for the Affordable Housing Fund that will be scheduled for November along with the diversity presentation.
Well, good. So are we going to put the, take it's a quasi-judicial hearing? Can we put that first on the agenda? Okay, that'd be good. And then we'll we'll tackle that. Any other comment?
I missed that. So the diversity conversation, did you say that's in November? When what else is? I'm sorry, I missed that.
So at the October meeting, there's going to be a public hearing for the proposed meteorological tower on Nicolai Ridge. We will have your presentation on the resiliency project. And then we'll also be bringing goal two of the comp plan, the draft rewrite for your review. And then in November, we would have the work item about the Affordable Housing Fund and the diversity presentation. And then probably also goal three.
Just one question. Are are we going to go back to getting hard copies of the packets? Because I I find it difficult doing this all on the screen, frankly.
Me too.
Okay, who who would like hard copies and who does not? Chris, John, Bruce, do you want a hard copy?
Yes, I'd like a hard copy to definitely run the hearing. That's what I would need, the information on the hearing.
Okay, Nadia?
No, thank you. I, what I do is I have an iPad, so I have my packet up on my iPad and then I use my laptop for the for the viewing. If anybody has, it's nice sometimes, or you could have, if you have two screens, you can actually split your screens and do one, the video and the other, your packet. So that's, that's what we're all learning to do, right, under COVID?
Right, and you're on top of it.
Okay, Myrna, do you want a paper packet?
Yes, I would like a hard copy, please.
Okay, Robert?
No, thank you. I do the download where I then have it on a separate screen of the PDF that came straight from the county of the agenda packet.
Okay, thank you. And I'll check with Long to see what he would prefer.
Okay, and then the other thing that I will need for that hearing is a copy of the quasi-judicial readout of the management of it. All right, so any other points of view? If not, then I thank everybody for attending and we're adjourned. Thank you.